Good evening. Good evening. My name is Robin Denson, Mayor Pro Tem, and I am happy to welcome you all to the City Council meeting Monday, March 28th, 2022. We will start with a call to order and a roll call from our far left.
Jenny Wook, Council.
Seth Storset, Council.
Lee Rodenberg, Council.
Brenda Lycans, Council.
Robin Denson, Council.
Roger Henderson, Council.
Mary Barber, Council.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to invite-
Your Honor, if I just may, we should note that you are presiding at the meeting tonight because Mayor Markley is under the weather, and we wish her a very speedy recovery.
Thank you, Mr. Piasacki. Yes, we do, for sure. Okay, I would like to invite Chief Bucy up to the podium for a statement and to lead us all in a moment of silence for the recently fallen law enforcement officers.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Been a kind of a tough couple of weeks for in law enforcement in Western Washington here. So as I departed the memorial service last Friday for Deputy Collada in Pierce County, learned of the tragic and senseless death of Officer Dan Rocha of the Everett Police Department. So appreciate the outpouring of support from the community, and we've received quite a bit of that. It kind of affects us all. So with that in mind, if you would join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of those two officers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Bucy, and we want you all to be safe out there. Okay, next we have changes to the agenda. Would any council members like to make any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
My second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. And one of the items on the consent agenda was the approval of our city administrator employment agreement. So we have our city administrator, our new city administrator, Linda Kelly, here with us. Linda, would you like to come up to the podium and say a few words and sign your contract? Can't back out now.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council and Mayor Markley. In her absence, I just want to really thank her as well as all of you for your confidence in me, and I look forward to a great tenure ahead here in the city of Gig Harbor and working with the staff as a team as we move forward into a new era. So again, just really excited. I have my husband with me. My better half is here, Gary, and he is my strongest supporter, my number one fan, so I couldn't do this without him. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We are excited to have you onboard. Welcome. Okay, at this time, we are going to adjourn for 10 minutes to discuss potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 subsection I. No action will be taken. So quick 10-minute executive session, and we'll be back.
I just love living here. We moved into Canterwood. I have three children. Twenty-four-year-old son lives in Denver. I have a 20-year-old daughter that lives with us and works at Costco, and a 20-year-old son that's in Boise. And we love this community and being here and just appreciate it. A little bit more about our fire department. I don't know where to point it. You want to just advance for me? All right, we'll just do that. We started in 1944. John Finnholm started the fire department after a fire in 1944, and we got an old number one, a 1945 Ford, and we still have it at our headquarters. Next, please. We are a fire district, so there's five elected fire commissioners that I work for. They're elected by our community, and then I work directly for them. Alex Willsey, Tom Sutage, Kevin Enzie, Joe Arvina, and Bryce Nelson are the five fire commissioners. Next, please. This is our fire district. It's everything south of the Kitsap Line, including Fox Island and Raft Island. We have nine fire stations, but only five of them are staffed. So starting with the one right over here on Kimball is Station 51, that has a battalion chief, a medical safety officer, a fire engine with three firefighters, and a medic unit or an ambulance with two firefighter paramedics on it. Station 52 is off Point Fostic near the airport. It has an engine with three firefighters. Station 56 near Purdy off 144th has a fire engine with three firefighters. Station 58, which is right next to our headquarters, has a fire engine with three firefighters and two paramedics on our medic unit. And then Station 59 in Artendale across from Artindale Elementary has an engine with three firefighters and two paramedics on a medic unit. So that's our district, and we have about 53,000 people in our district. We have 130 employees, 118 are firefighters, and our budget's about $33 million. Our call volume has been increasing, and we've went up about 42% in the last 10 years to about, we had a little drop off with COVID. Lots of people weren't going into the hospital and staying home, so we had a little drop off, but we're coming back up. Next one, please. So we do a lot more. Our name is Gig Harbor Fire and Medic One, and Fire is our middle name, but we do way more than just fight fires. We do wildland firefighting, structured firefighting, all EMS in the entire peninsula, whether it be basic life support and advanced life support or transport to the hospital. We do technical rescue with trench, high-angle, low-angle water rescues, vehicle extrication, search and rescue, structure collapses, public education, fire prevention, and any life safety, too. We also, on the next slide, have a contract with the city of Gig Harbor to do inspections, and these are some of the numbers that we've been doing. In 2020, 1,518 inspections, and 2021, 1,360. But the two things that I want to highlight is that we've had zero referrals to the city for enforcement because I believe that the success in our fire safety program is based on long-term relationships with our property owners and with our tenants. You know, we can go in and be badge-heavy, or we can create relationships, and that's what we want to do. And Paul Hayes does an excellent job of creating relationships so that we do more education than enforcement. In fact, one good example is five years ago, there was a significant property owner of 10-plus commercial properties that refused to allow us to do any safety inspections on their buildings. And through just that ongoing education and creating relationships and partnerships, we were able to inspect all the properties in 2021, and we had 100% compliance with safety. And that's the way we want to run our organization, is that we're partnering with our businesses so that we're all safe. Next one, please. This is how we're funded. We are funded on $2 property taxes. $1.50 of it is fire, and 50 cents is EMS, so it's $2 per 1,000 of assessed value comes to Gig Harbor Fire and Medic One. There's that limiting factor by RCW that of only 1% growth, and because of that, our levies have eroded over time. And we're in year six of six for our EMS levy. Our 50-cent EMS levy has eroded down to about 44 cents, and our fire levy is about $1.37. So, and then we're funded through capital needs, sometimes through a voter bond, which I'll talk about that in here in just a second. So as I was saying, we're on year six of six of our EMS levy, so we will be in November asking for that levy lid lift to go back up to, from 44 cents to 50 cents. So it's not a new tax. It's just, it's year six of our levy, and it'll be going back up to 50 cents in November. One thing that I do like to highlight that a lot of people don't know is when we transport people to the hospital, or we come to your home and give you any type of service, anybody that lives in our community, we don't charge. We don't balance bill. They'll never see a bill from us because of that 50 cents. We do take the insurance as billing, but we don't have any out-of-pocket expenses for anybody that lives in our community, and we believe that 50 cents should take care of that. We recently finished a capital facilities plan that looked at all of our facilities, and over time, when we needed to look at them, we had a bond in 1984 that built many of our facilities, and we saw that we have lots of problems. We have ADA and seismic problems. We have lax security systems. You know, our stations were built when we were a volunteer fire department. Now we're 100% paid fire department. There's not enough room in our stations. We don't have areas for a gender diverse workforce, and it's just time to revamp some of our stations. So to fund our capital facilities plan, the board is considering a bond that I'll tell you a little bit more about. Some of our projects include building a new training facility to meet our industry standards, replacing Station 51 here on Kimball, renovating Station 53, 57, 58, and 59. You know, cancer is a big deal amongst firefighters. It's the leading cause of death of firefighters, and we have learned over time that we have been bringing those carcinogens into our station and into our living quarters. And in most of our stations, we need to build a place where we can decontaminate not only our gear but bloodborne pathogens when we go on calls. And we're going to build some areas in these stations so that we can extract all that soot and that smoke and the bloodborne pathogens before bringing them into the stations. Also, we need to upgrade our fire training. We're required to do live fire training once every three years, and that's just a minimum. Right now, to get live fire training, we have to send our firefighters to North Bend off-duty on overtime. So we drive for two hours, get a few hours of training, and then drive back. And it's just not cost-effective. It's not, we should be doing more live training, fire training than we do. We also, when we hire firefighters, we have nowhere to send them for Recruit Academy. I have to look around and shop and ask Tacoma, or I have to ask, right now, we're in Central Pierce's Fire Academy. But sometimes we don't line up with their academies, and we need a training facility here on our peninsula to train our firefighters on live fire training more than just once every three years. We need to be doing training over and over because of the, it's a high life safety hazard. Our adequate facilities are important. They're almost as important as our firefighters and the apparatus that respond, and we've seen a growth of 16%, and our call volume's of 42%. The next slide, I'll show you a little bit of our training facility. We're looking at a five-story training tower right behind Station 58, right behind our headquarters. We already have the property. This was already designed in 2008 before the market, the recession in 2008. So we're bringing that back so we can do some live fire training right behind our headquarters. This bond that we're looking at, where we're in the process, is last week, we had a draft come to the commissioners. We're still seeking impact from our community from you, and on April 12th, the commissioners will make a final decision on our bond. We've looked at our projects. We'd looked at the amount, and right now, it looks like we'll do a 20-year, $80 million bond. It's projected to cost 24 cents per 1,000 of assessed property value, which is about $9.90 a month for a $500,000 house. So we're looking for any input that you have. We have all this information on our website. You can look at previous commissioner meetings. You can find all the information you have there, or I can go over it more. I know we're on a short amount of time, so I don't want to spend a lot of time, but I wanted to give you some time to ask any questions. The vote will be in August if the commissioners approve it in two weeks. And in conclusion, I just want to say that I've met with the mayor, and I've met with many of you. I want you to feel like I'm your fire chief, too. I know I'm not a city fire chief. I'm the entire district, but I want you to feel like I'm your fire chief, and I will come to any meeting anytime, and I just want to support you and this community. So I want to thank you for having me here, and I'll just stand for any questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Don. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Wook, and then Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, first of all, thank you so much for being here. The training facility that you're wanting to build, would it also be a training facility for other cities as well? They could come here and use that training facility?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We have been working, in fact, we're having some of our first meetings in the next couple of weeks of creating a consortium, a training consortium in Pierce County, meaning we have a training officer, East Pierce has a training officer, West Pierce Fire has a training officer. What if we brought all the training officers together and created a training plan for the entire county and then used each other's facilities for different things? Like, the Recruit Academy might be at our facility because we'll have a live fire training facility. Then we may do some EMS training at another place, but we're looking at doing a consortium for training and sharing those resources.
That's a great idea. So thank you for that. I also want to thank you because our citizens have come to expect a level of service in this community that it's healthy and safe and functioning, and that's what you guys provide for our citizens, and you get to them when they need you the most, and it's important. So I hope when you finalize this draft, that you will come back to the city and hopefully we can make a vote to support this. So have a good evening. Thank you.
And it looks like Councilmember Rodenberg had his question answered. Yeah, there you go.
I did have the same question, but I guess it was a little bit more complex. Would that be a, you're going to share facilities, so it wouldn't be a revenue source. You wouldn't be charging these other agencies to come here and train your new facility, or would you?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we don't know yet. I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver and sell that it's a moneymaker, right? But I do think there are some opportunities in the consortium, especially in the consortium we've talked about. If we come with more like a facility, that we might get a reduction in the cost in that consortium when we're putting it together. I do think there's opportunities to share with other departments, maybe keep an insulator come over for some training. So at first, I think it'll be kind of a sharing of resources in Pierce County, but there may be some opportunities if it became a training facility that grew. So I think a little bit of both.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief John. That was excellent. I know that training is critical for you folks and for us, too, since we receive your services. And I know that training in the structural fires is huge, but do you plan to do any training on wildland fires with this drying climate that we're getting right, that we have right now? I could see wildfires becoming more and more critical, especially on the western side of the Cascades right now.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, we are always training a wildland fire. In fact, Gig Harbor Fire kind of leads it in Pierce County. We have multiple members on statewide and national incident management teams for wildfire. We deploy around the nation in wildfire. I come from a department that was a leader in the nation with Wildland or Urban Interface in Boise and the National Interagency Fire Center in Boise. So yes, wildfire is, people have asked me what keeps me up at night. Here in Gig Harbor, what keeps me up at night is a wildfire that starts going through this community. You know, I know we're in a wetter climate, but if we were to ever get a wildfire to start crowning in the trees here with five fire engines, we're not stopping it. We're focusing on evacuation. So I would say that's the thing that keeps me up at night the most, is having a wildfire in this community.
And now it will keep us up at night, too.
I'm sorry. That's my job, I think, though.
Hi, thank you. So this is more of a statement of just support. In your great presentation, thank you for being here, you talked about balanced billing, and you just briefed over it very quickly. And as a healthcare provider, that is huge. You know, we hate to order a transport of one of my patients when I order it, knowing I'm leaving potentially a family with thousands and thousands of dollars with their own payment. So the fact that you transport without asking, you know, that extra money, that's a huge benefit to our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember. It not only helps all of our EMS providers knowing that that expense isn't going to hurt them, because it is very, very, transport fees are very expensive, and very few fire departments do this around the nation. So we use that 50-cent levy and then what we get from insurance so that people don't have to worry about it. They don't have to hesitate to call 911 because they think they're going to get a bill. And it's important to us, important to our commissioners, and important to our community. So thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Storset.
Love the sound effects. Thank you very much, Chief Don, for your presentation. We also did receive, you know, a bit of information from Nick Langlo, one of your guys, and a very, you know, much more detail in there. So first, I want to say you guys have an amazing reputation in our community, what you guys do, and especially not just response, but also in being fiscally responsible. And so I know this is a huge bond, right? When you look at a 20-year, $80 billion bond, it is obviously significant, but you guys have proved to be very responsible in that way, and I think it would be great for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for that. I'm excited for the future and also a little nervous that we have these votes coming up, too. So thank you for your support.
Thank you for all your good work, Chief Don. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right, now we are on to the mayor's report, and I have a very serious announcement to make.
Your Honor, we have one other presentation from Pierce County.
Oh, sorry. I was so excited.
Mr. Brown's been waiting very patiently.
All right, sorry, Mr. Brown. We have Chris Brown of Tacoma Pierce County Solid and Hazardous Waste Management for their 2021 to 2040 plan. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Chris Brown. I'm with Pierce County Planning and Public Works. I'm going to share my screen here and see if I can give you just a brief overview of the new Tacoma Pierce County Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan. So we have a brand-new 20-year plan, and so what we're looking at, can you see the presentation? Okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. So briefly, I'll go over vision of the plan, background, development, organization overview, appendices, and next steps. So the vision for this specific plan has really three core principles: equity, health, and resiliency, which are kind of new pieces that we weren't really looking at in the previous plan. The reason for the plan is it is a state requirement for local governments to develop a comprehensive solid waste management plan that guides basically improvements and needs for a 20-year period. There's also a state requirement for a moderate-risk waste plan or a hazardous waste management plan. We are combining those into one, which is really what the majority of the state is doing now. And so if we go back just a little bit, we had the 2000 plan, which you guys were a part of. It had a couple of updates in 2008 and 2016. In 16, we really, I think, introduced the focus of waste reduction over recycling, which was a pretty big change from where we had been. And I think we're really continuing that with the 2021 plan. Waste reduction, as you'll see kind of throughout the plan, is really where our big focus is. With this plan, we're also, like I said, we're including a local hazardous waste management plan, and we're also including a contamination reduction and outreach plan, which is a new requirement from the Department of Ecology. And I'll talk a little bit about that here in just a few minutes. This specific plan had a lot of team members to it. We had several people from Pierce County. We had a couple from the city of Tacoma. The Health Department and the Department of Ecology were involved, which was really beneficial for us. Our disposal experts at LRI, as well as all of our service providers, DM Disposal, Lemay, Murray, and UP Refuse. So at any one time, we probably had, I would say, anywhere from 10 to 15 people at every one of our meetings. And then from there, we would take it back and talk to our SWAC about what was happening so that they were involved, too. So this actual project management team was probably close to, oh, the better part of 20 people. We really kicked this thing off in June of 2020. So when we actually have a full plan, it'll be almost a two-year period. We went through a lot of different pieces, took us about a year and a half before we finally got our preliminary comments back from the Department of Ecology. We were fortunate at the same time- We were fortunate, at the same time we did that, we were able to do a our our public comment period. And so we have kind of, we've now incorporated almost all of those things into the plan in one way or another. The plan itself is very long. The the meat of the plan has 10 chapters to it. Each chapter has a small intro, a conditions assessment, kind of a planning area or planning issues section. And finally, the recommended, recommended actions that have come from that. There are also 25 appendices that we have for this plan and it just, those are almost all required in one form or another by the state. When we were putting the plan together, there were several other things that we kind of had to keep in mind. The state has has a solid and hazardous waste management plan. The county has a comprehensive plan, a sustainability 2030 plan. The city of Tacoma had an environmental action plan and a sustainable materials management plan. The Health Department has their communities of focus strategy. We also had several land use plans, potential zoning regulations that may come up with some of our infrastructure needs in the future. So all of those we had to kind of be mindful of when we were building this this specific plan. The other big thing that we really had to focus on was trying to identify some of the emerging issues that we were going to see. Waste reduction, I think, is is really the top of of our list because it's the thing that I think we really want to try and focus on is getting as much out of the landfill and and out of those waste streams as we can, which is, as you can see by the the Materials Management Hierarchy, it's the most desirable outcome. It it has the the greatest effect on on what we're doing. But some of the other things that we were looking at are the extended producer responsibility. I think we're going to see more and more of that as as products come through. Paint carry is an excellent example of that. In fact, we now have the capability of taking latex paint through this program at Hidden Valley Transfer Station. And I think we're going to try and do this out at the Purdy Transfer Station as well, but I'm not sure when that's going to come online. Climate change is is another big issue that we are going to have to address. The Sustainability 2030 Plan calls for a 45% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. And it's one of the plan's primary focuses is around waste reduction. Food waste, the state passed the Food Waste Reduction Act, which calls for a 50% reduction in food waste by 2030. So we're going to have to to really, I think, put some sort of a program together sooner rather than later. I think staying on top of statewide legislation as it relates to solid waste. The plastic bag ban was a good example of that and and trying to stay out in front of those things. And then improving equitable outcomes. Sustainability 2030 Plan is or Sustainability 2030 is working on an equity assessment that will hopefully be completed next year. And I think the the results of that are really going to help guide efforts for a much more equitable solid waste system. The actual plan has five goal categories. So we've got sustainability, resources, communication and education, partnerships and sustain system and and infrastructure. Under those five goals, we have 11 objectives. And under those 11 objectives, we're looking at 32 different action items. Actually, there was going to be 33 action items. We added one to hopefully address illegal dumping and homeless encampments. But that's going to be kind of a multi-agency collaboration when we get to that. We've we've broken those down into three different durations. Short term ones, we're hoping to have probably in a year or two completed. Many of those are kind of the low hanging fruit. We've got some midterm, which we would like to have completed by that first update, which should be about five or six years from now. And then the long term ones, for example, like the the infrastructure needs or the potential of building a new intermodal facility for rail options are probably going to span at least one, if not two, updates. Some of the, some of the the actions that we have are addressing funding needs, you know, whether it's grants, rates or some other area that we can come up with to to help fund these things. Creating a stakeholder roundtable that addresses new recycling options or infrastructure needs, whatever those happen to be, equity issues, potential garbage rates and discounts for low income, communication needs, reaching underserved communities and target audiences, supporting legislation that promotes lowest life cycle greenhouse gas emissions, creating and increasing commercial recycling, food waste reduction, promoting EPR programs, promoting and coming up with new ways to reuse and recycle for C and D. The commercial and demolition debris really is one of the highest or has one of the highest greenhouse gas emissions. Working with municipalities on making sure we have adequate spacing for new and existing multifamily complexes. And I think one of the, the, one of the long term things that we're looking at and thinking about are the long haul by rail so that we can hopefully lengthen the the life of the landfill that we have. As I, as I had mentioned before, we have a new piece to this that will be in the appendices, but you can also kind of see pieces of this throughout the plan. And that's going to be the the crop, the contamination reduction and outreach plan. And really what this is geared toward, geared towards is trying to figure out ways and help educate the the rate payers on how to reduce contamination in our recycling. Right now in Pierce County, we're looking at about a 21% contamination rate, which really comes down to glass, other recyclables that probably should be dropped off somewhere as opposed to being put into your commingled can. And then just things that are garbage. And a lot of the things that are garbage are more of the wish cycling type of things rather than just just straight garbage. It's a lot of things that people think are recyclable or would want them to be recyclable, but actually and then the crop has really five pieces to it. The the list of actions to reduce contamination, the the a list of those contaminants, their effects on the the system, a cost analysis, and then the implementation to help educate and reduce the overall contamination in our recycling. Our next steps, so I it it's next Tuesday, it goes before council, for a county council for adoption. After that, we will send it to the cities and towns for resolution. And then it'll go to the Department of Ecology for their final review. And once, once they have put their stamp of approval on it, we will have a plan in place that will last at least. It's a 20 year plan with an update in five years. And that's kind of the the quick and and dirty overview. And and if you have any questions, I will, I will do my best answer.
Mayor, Council makes any comments or ask questions. You may recall that we had an interlocal agreement go forward with Pierce County several months ago for this planning. As Mr. Brown said, it is something we're required to do, but given the nature of our organization, it made a lot more sense to have Pierce County include us in all their planning. We have at staff level, we've seen the plan. We had been reviewing it and commenting on it. And when the time comes, council will be getting the plan as well. I will say that Mr. Brown has done a very good job of giving you a very high level. But some of the things that he talked about with regard to sustainability, food reduction, food waste reduction, climate change and the like are much more addressed in the draft plan. And I've been very impressed with what they have in there.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Brown. We've got a couple of questions. First is from Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown, for this presentation. It was excellent. I had a question on the Materials Management Hierarchy. I noticed that recycling and composting is, well, either if you look at it from the top, it's third from the top or third from the bottom.
Yeah.
Are are you, is Pierce County going to take any more actions to improve our recycling opportunities in Pierce County? I think a lot of people might feel somewhat frustrated that they can't recycle as much as they would like to. You actually sort of alluded to that in calling it a wish recycling. I wish this were recyclable. Are you, are there going to be any more actions taken or any more programs that we can open that up?
I would say yes. We we constantly, I would say, probably at least twice a year, really look at the full list of what we can and can't put in our commingled in our commingled cans. The big, the big issue we have really is with the contaminants that go in there. We're trying to create more drop off locations. It's not, it's not super ideal and I know people would rather be able to just put them at their curb. But from a cost effective standpoint, it it really is, I think, the the best option right now. I think that the markets right now are really starting to improve. We're seeing, I think, domestically, more things have value and we're we're getting more markets for those things. So we may end up seeing an opportunity here in the in the near future to hopefully add some things to the commingled cart, especially as the the material recovery facilities start getting, I think, more advanced equipment and and better ways of of sorting, which they are are constantly doing, constantly putting in new machines and and advanced technology. And so I think as those things happen, you're going to, you're going to see more and more opportunities for recycling, which I think gives us a a really good opportunity to keep more things out of the landfill.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. I think you just probably answered my question. So so there will be no more curb recycling, but you are trying to get more items to be commingled. Is that the goal?
I think so. It it would be great, you know, in the future, if we can add things to the commingled cart. And like I said, with with the, with where the material act ends up, as their technology gets better and their sorting machines and those opportunities arise, which we're seeing more of, I think we'll be able to do that. I think that's what, that's really what we're hearing that people want is is more opportunity to recycle. And so we're constantly looking at how we can make that happen.
Great. I think I think you're right on the bat with that. I think people do want to recycle, but there is no place right now.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's all the questions. Thank you, Mr. Brown. We look forward to seeing the plan.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for your patience as well. Okay, mayor's report. Now we have something very important to to discuss. We understand that there are two birthdays in the room. Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm and Councilmember Storset. So we all wanted to sing happy birthday and you and the audience are also welcome to join us. I think I'm going to turn off my microphone, though. All right, one, two, three. I think we sounded pretty good. All right, next is our city administrators' report, Mr. Piesacki.
First, I have to say that's the best mayor's report I've ever heard. Awesome. I have three quick items that I made today. First of all, on the consent calendar, council approved the emergency declaration for the repairs on Borgan. And I'd like Jeff to give you a quick update as to what's going on with that. Jeff?
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, Council, Mayor Pro Temp. I'm going to steal the screen away from Josh real quick. Okay, so I'm sure most of you are aware that we had some emergency work going on out on Borgan Boulevard. I'm kind of zoomed in. I'll try and get my cursor in here. We're on Borgan Boulevard here. This is Olympus Way. The emergency work is in the westbound lane as you approach Olympus, Olympus Drive. There's some settling that's going on in the roadway. Operations has been working on trying to resolve this issue in January and February. Every time it rained hard, we saw more settlement. Show you some pictures now of what it looks, what it looked like originally and how it's grown. I can zoom in a little bit here. So you can see there's a bar across the road and you can also see in the distance, there's some of the patching that's been done recently. Sorry. And there has. So we went through, we did an emergency contract based on the purchasing policy that interim city administrator Piesacki signed that contract. By that purchasing policy, we need to come back to council to declare the emergency. That's what we've done here tonight on the consent agenda. And I just wanted to roll through a couple of pictures and let you know where we are. Not responding. Come on, you can do it. There we go. So this is a picture of what, after the crew went out there in February, what it looked like. It's kind of hard to see, I apologize. But there's a huge void right here, about six inches underneath the asphalt. And that's why the roadway was settling. We ended up calling, based on that contract that Tony Piesacki signed, we contracted Pavin Sun's local firm and got them out there on March 11. And they were going to do some exploratory work, assess the situation. We assumed at first that it was there was an abandoned utility on there that was causing settlement. And so that's how we approached it. They did some excavation and they found that there wasn't an abandoned utility that usually was actually removed as it was called out in the contract originally when the roadway was constructed. And instead, it was just really poor soils. It's kind of hard to see. But there's a probe bar right here, T handle probe bar, that's probably about six feet tall. It just disappeared when we pushed it into the soil. So we knew something was going to be even bigger issue. This is a picture of what it looked like when they excavated down. This is about five feet down. You can see there's just a mess, a soupy mess of soil, water together down here. And so as they continued to excavate, the contractor found, they went more than 10 feet down and continued to see just a mix of clay and silt. And so as you can assume, that's not a good roadbed. There's a lot of water that's being transferred. We didn't know where it was coming from. It's probably been coming off site somewhere and it hits a hard layer and then just travels horizontally and then hits this material. And when it gets inundated with water, it just turns into really soft material. So we backed up. We said, okay, we need to come at this as a different approach. We recognized that we were now quite a few feet, approaching 100 feet of roadway excavation that we'd have to do. And we're looking at, at least at this point, we did some more pothauling. We're at more than 10 feet down. That's a massive excavation. It's affecting the curb and gutter by doing the sidewalk or by doing this excavation. It might affect the sidewalk that's adjacent to it on the north side. So what we're doing right now is this contractor, they had two weeks to give us because they paused the job that they're working on over in East Pierce County. And they said they had to get back to that job. And so they said they had to go back and they wouldn't be able to be back until May. That's too long for us. So we said, okay, please close out this contract. We're going to then move forward with another contractor, local contractor. RV Associates is the one we're working with right now. And then we're going to hopefully be able to get them under contract very soon and then actually dig down, do this mass excavation and then rebuild it with layers of crushed rock and geotextile fabric. And then rebuild the soils underneath there. And then we're going to have to repave the roadway and then put in curb gutter and any sidewalk that might have been affected. So right now, we're only in the $30,000 range, I think, is about what Trent was estimating for the exploratory work, but it's going to be a lot more when we get into here. The original contract with Pape was not to exceed $300,000. But it's going to be a lot more when we get into here. The original contract with Pape was not to exceed $300,000. I hope we can stay under that. But more to come when we do a contract with RV Associates. So any questions on that?
Councilmember Storset. No worries. Councilmember Henderson. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Wook.
What was the blue pipe?
That was likely a stormwater pipe.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. That was a good update. As we know, we have no traffic problems on Borgan right now. This is probably going to require some closure, at least partial lane closure, or maybe even more than what we've already seen just by coning it off.
Yes. So you're right. For now, until we get the contractor out there, we're going to just keep it coned off, sectioned off as is. If you drove in this area when the Pave and Sons was out there, you will have seen that they took the four lane travel, the roadway narrowed it down to one lane in each direction, shifted everybody to the south side. We think that we can do that again without having much impact. There will be an impact, but not too much. And they're going to have to bring in, if we do truly go down that deep, they're bringing in shoring, safety shoring and everything else. But we think that we can do it without having alternating traffic, except for maybe as they get really close to the roundabout. As you know, when we do construction right up against a roundabout, we have to shut down the entire roundabout and move traffic backwards through the roundabout. So that will be an impact. But otherwise, I think we'll be just be able to have the two lanes.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Piesacki?
Yes, I have two other items. We were notified last week from our federal government lobbyists that it is time for us to submit our request for federal funding for fiscal year 2023. That budget generally is not start until October, when generally it does start in October, but the process of putting it together starts now. Unfortunately, the deadline to get our requests in are very, very short. For Representative Kilmer, it's this Friday. For Mayor, I'm sorry, for Senator Murray, it's the fifth, so next Tuesday. And for Senator Cantwell, it's the 10th. So I've been talking with staff about what, and obviously with Dale, about what sort of projects would be most favorable? What is it we should be supporting? And we're suggesting three, and that's the maximum that Mr. Lawrence suggests that we submit. The first one is 38th Avenue, Phase Two. The second one would be actually the commercial homeport because of the Maritime Heritage Fund Historic Preservation Construction. He thought that would be a very good project for us to submit. And the third one would be for the sports complex. You'll note that the one I don't have in here is anything to do with North Creek, Donkey Creek, simply because we are too early in the planning stage for that to go forward with a request for construction in 2024 just will not be successful. So those three projects are the recommendation from staff. And unless there's an objection from council, we're going to move forward with those. Jeff's got some writing to do. Thank you. Oh, he's already been thinking about this.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, exactly. And then finally, once I'm done with my report here, we will go to public comment on non-agenda items. The mayor has asked me to read that one section of the rules for public comment that we would like to remind everybody who would like to comment, both here in chambers and online. And that is all remarks shall be addressed to the councils of body and not to any specific council member. All speakers shall be courteous in their language and deportment and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities or indulge in derogatory marks or insinuations with regard to any council member, the mayor, or any member of the staff or public. Mayor felt that one of our callers last week violated those rules. And she is very regretful that she did not step in and stop that and correct those sort of comments and have the speaker get to a higher level to discuss what his concerns were. I also want to make it very clear that what we're saying is it is you cannot come here and criticize the city or the council. Say you have a concern, say you don't like the way something's been done. That's part of the process that we go through as elected and appointed officials. People can come and tell us what they think. What we're asking to do is be professional and courteous and maintain a measure decorum that we need in order to have a good communication with them. So again, the mayor said she regrets not being able not stepping in the way she should have. And she said she will be doing much better in the future. And I imagine at the meeting on the 11th, she will probably want to say something to that effect herself. But she felt it was very important that something be said at this meeting, the next meeting after the incident that occurred two weeks ago. And with that, Your Honor, that is my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Piesacki. And with that, we will go to public comment on non-agenda items. So these are comments you might have about things that are not under the following new business items. So we'll start with people in the room. If there's somebody that has an item, come on up, Mr. Zamel. And please state your name and your address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Zamel. My address is 1127 13th Avenue, Fox Island, or Post Office Box 67, Fox Island, at 98333. I spoke to you folks on January 24 via Zoom about a project that I'm taking on, trying to get the community members who live in Gig Harbor to join the Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. Following that, that talk, there was a very nice article in the Peninsula Gateway about what would happen if my desires, well, my desires are let the people vote. I don't know if they will vote yes or no, but if they voted yes, this is what would happen. Currently, the taxpayers in Gig Harbor are levied at taxes of $8.89 per $1,000 of valuation. At the rate the Penn Med is currently charging, and it changes every year, is 67 cents. With that 67 cents added on, they would, the citizens living in Gig Harbor would be paying $9.56 per $1,000. People who live in Penn Met District, say on Fox Island or Rosedale or Cromwell or any of our neighboring shore acres are currently paying $9.83 per thousand valuation. People on the Key Peninsula, Pierce County, who belong to Key Peninsula Metropolitan Park District, are paying $9.84. It's not a real penny difference between the two Penn Met and Key Penn, but they take it out so far. It's like a half a cent difference. But at $9.56, the people in Gig Harbor would still be paying the lease for taxes and having a benefit of a metropolitan park district. Also, after that article, I was able to talk with Matthew and set up a meeting with him, your park manager, very gentle, nice gentleman. And Tony, I won't butcher your last name, but Tony was able to meet with me also that day. And through Matthew's work, he was able to come up with a map that probably a contractor in the city of Gig Harbor prepared. And this shows every annexation to the city since its incorporation in 47. When Penn Met Park District was conceptualized in the beginning, the Pierce County Boundary Review Board came to the people of Gig Harbor and asked where the boundary should be. They said there was two places they wanted to reserve the right to have no Penn Met. One of those was on the western Employment District side. The other was the Keyhole. They've since filled in. In 2009, you annexed about 200 acres up north of Zamel. Those people are currently in Penn Met and currently in the city and are currently paying the $9.56. It's easy to sit back and not do anything, but I'm asking to get involved. I'm asking the citizens to get involved in the district, take all the advantages that it has. Have a seat at the table when we discuss what's going to happen with the 74 acres at Madrona Links Airport or golf course.
Thank you, Mr. Zamel. Thank you for your time. Would anyone else like to comment on something not on the agenda? And the city clerk, Mr. Stecker, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, I'd just remind our listeners on Zoom, if you'd like to comment, you can raise your hand. Or if you're calling in by phone, you can press star nine on your phone.
And a three minute limit, which actually I didn't didn't say to Mr. Zamel. So thank you. Good job.
We have no commenters online.
Okay, then we will move on to new business. And the first item of new business is a professional services contract for Gig Harbor Sports Complex Phase 1B Design Permitting and Bid Support. And we will have a report from Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to start the presentation by talking briefly about the history of the city at this site and how we arrived at this point with Phase 1B project. The Gig Harbor North Sports Complex concept originally started in earnest in 2013. There was an initial master plan that began its planning process in 2014. And that was associated with what we know now as the Phase Three portion of the site. That work continued with input from Parks Commission and public comment until 2016. And there was resulting master plan prepared for just that site. But then the city continued. We looked and ended up purchasing what is now known as the Penn Light Fields in 2016. That's right directly adjacent to the Phase Three site and look to incorporate those two sites together. And then in 2017, the city ended up purchasing the two properties that total 11 and a half acres that make up Phase One of the sports complex. Those two properties were developed through a commercial subdivision created by Olympic Property Group back in 2006. This was the same commercial subdivision that created Costco, the lot for Costco, the lot for the YMCA, the lot for Swift Water Elementary, and all those up and along Harbor Hill Drive. It also created Harbor Hill Drive that through that commercial subdivision. And so there was all that land use that went through for that commercial complex. It was during that time that traffic trips were reserved, and the site was evaluated based on its impacts for commercial use and not park use. The master plan that was created for all three of the phases that we see today of the sports complex was eventually created and approved by council in 2018. And there was significant public input and council input as that master plan was created. So the request before you tonight is to approve a consultant contract for the design and permitting of Phase 1B. You know, you are very aware of the lease that we have with the YMCA, which is in Phase 1A. There's been some back and forth on who which entity city YMCA is doing which part. It depends on who which entity moves forward first. But I also know that there's been a lot of concerns raised from the public about whether or not the city is going to be able to review all of the impacts from the Phase 1A project and specifically Phase 1B. So I wanted to go through quickly and just summarize what the intent of the Phase 1B consultant contract is. This contract that's before you tonight will prepare traffic impact analysis. It's going to establish where and what size the existing significant tree coverage is. It's going to determine a recommendation for tree retention. It's going to review impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods from light and noise. It's going to generate both soils reports and stormwater reports. It's going to determine per the city's code what the parking requirements are. It's going to review all the cumulative impacts to the neighborhood and to the city as a whole. And it's going to allow for additional public input on some of the design elements for the for the park. All of these reports that will be generated through this consultant contract will then be reviewed by city staff and then submitted to the Community Development Department for their review on the eventual land use application. And once found consistent, the intent is to then have that land use approval move forward and then a construction contract for the Phase 1B site awarded by council. Now, that construction contract is not what we're talking about here. This is just design permitting. That construction contract is is more than a year away. Once we are to that point, then the city will end up paying the appropriate approved transportation impact fees, general facilities charges. And then based on the land use approvals, there will be determination if there's any mitigation required. And then that mitigation will be rolled up into the construction contract. We are asking at this point that those with any concerns to let the consultant move forward with generating the documents necessary to review potential impacts. That's going to be created by engineering and submitted to community development. It's and for the land use approval process. And it's through that, at that point, that the public will be able to review what those impacts will be. We're going to be asking for a binding site plan through this phase so that this phase can be treated as an extension of the phase or as the YMCA site. They're going to be connected closely together and hopefully will be, from the general public, you'll just see them as one large site. But that requires a binding site plan to complete. The extents and details of the binding site plan is going to be developed and assessed through the land use process and the consultant design. We don't have a lot of details on that at this point. And I want to be clear that in order for the city to answer the questions that are being asked of it by the public, we need to initiate this contract so that we can have the consultant develop the reports that are that the public is asking questions on. So with that, I again request that consultant services contract be approved and happy to answer any questions you might have.
And before I have a council ask any questions, I want to make very clear that the question as to what environmental work will be done, are we talking about an EIS versus what's called mitigated determination of nonsignificance, which goes through all the environmental impacts and says here's what you need to do to mitigate them? Or a determination of nonsignificance? All of that is going to be determined as which one of those actions we do based upon the studies that Mr. Langholm just described. As they come in, they're submitted for permitting process, land use review and approval process through the Community Development Department. There will be plenty of opportunity for the public to see what has been proposed, to look at the reports that have been generated and to comment on the determination that is made through the SEPA process. And if Katrina, if you have anything else you wanted to add to that, did I just steal your thunder?
You did a great job.
Been through this once or twice.
Okay, are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff and Katrina. Yeah. We've chatted about this, and I understand there is a lot of public concern over this whole project. It's a fairly large project, and this is not an insignificant planning and permitting task. When I read through the scope of work as far, and now I'm kind of talking about the design elements, not the environmental impact or traffic analysis. I'd like to make sure that there's ample opportunities for the public, especially during the early design phases at 30% and maybe 60%, excuse me, to to add their input. I know that there's a couple of sections in the scope of work about what's called placemaking. And I and that's where community input is fairly critical. And it, you know, I didn't. I would just like to make sure that the public is not has an opportunity to add input, not necessarily to change the number of items that are going to be in the park. Because I understand that's linked to our RCO grant. So if we're going to get five pickleball courts and seven bocce ball courts, we don't change that. But the actual layout, I'm hoping, will be a topic that could garner some public But the actual layout, I'm hoping, will be a topic that could garner some public input because that's part of this place making effort. So that that would be my request to you because I know currently the scope of work, it just said, initial public meeting regarding playground design. And I think the public might want a little bit more than just the playground design. You may recall that we had a meeting in January that we'd initially thought would be an open house. And we decided not to do that, but we did promise we were going to do an initial open house before any of this work really gets really moving along. Staff and I have talked about that, and we are putting together a plan to do that up at the YMCA site. So we can be in the parking lot and we can be pointing at, see, go through all those trees. And that's where this is going to be. And look at that area over there. That's what we're going to do. I would suggest, since I won't be here in a few weeks, that there be frequent check in public open houses, just to say, here's where we're at in the design. Here's where we're at in how we're putting the features together. And I, I think knowing the staff and the mayor that something like that is definitely going to happen to keep everyone up to date as to what's going on. And I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember Henderson. Yeah, what I would like to achieve is a great deal of buy-in from the community because they're the eventual end users of this facility. And probably the other thing I wanted to mention, one of our topics at a study session might be good to about the landscaping and the tree retention and replanning, replanting. I think we can do that. And I think you should also know the the lease with the Y contemplates what's called an operating agreement. So you can get even more detailed as to how the facilities that they are going to be building will be used, who will be using them, which I know is a council a concern that Councilmember Wook has expressed several times. I've spoken with Jesse Palmer and Charlie Davis at the Y, and they're they're fairly certain their two fields will be majority used by Gig Harbor residents and Gig Harbor-based teams.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. I heard you say frequent open houses. I like to have something more than frequent there. And I don't know if that's a percentage there for open houses or how we can do something more than frequent.
Well, yeah, there are going to be times where we're going to be, you know, we have to be very careful. There's there's a line drawn between the applicant and the reviewer. And so at some point, when we get to 30% design, we are going to be submitting it for approvals. And so I would say that we can assign a number to that. But if we're able to put all of those discussions together before we get to 30% design, that's going to be key. Did you have a number that you're looking for? Are you looking for specific topics? I mean, because I have a whole list. I've been talking to a few council members about what this could look like. And
I don't know that I have any topics, but I think it should be the terminology should be something different than frequent.
Okay. We have, I think, just a couple of meetings in the scope of services with the consultant. We can add more at management's desire. And so I need to be able to allow some of the work to start. And then maybe we could report back to council with a schedule or something like that to put some pins on the wall of when we think we can have those meetings because we will need to submit land use applications to meet our anticipated construction window of next year. We need to get those off the ground and in the hands of community.
And I would add that if you're going to have an open house where you're showing progression, you need to have progression in order to have folks who are coming in and paying attention to each phase in the design process. So I think staff can put together a suggestion as to how that process would work, what the number of meetings, I won't use the F word there, frequency. And I think we will be, quite frankly, having an awful lot of public input that will go way beyond what you would normally see for a project like this.
Thank you. I think that's what our community wants to see. And so, yeah. So as long as there's something that we can tell them at some point in time before 30%, right?
Yes, I, yes, that's exactly right. And we'll all work with Parks Manager for sure to help with that.
We'll start at 0% and we'll work our way up.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. I'm really happy to hear that this is going to include a traffic study and also happy to hear that there is going to be continued discussion about what kind of environmental studies or environmental looks that that we need. So I guess my question is for Director Knudsen. How does that work? Like, what are you going to be looking for? What's going to trigger the different classifications of environmental studies that you might call for?
Mayor Protem, there's really multiple facets of this. One will be with the with the submittal, there will be a required SEPA checklist. And throughout that checklist, we look everything from wetlands, noise, glare, traffic. It's all, pardon me, it's all, there will be responses from the applicant on how many trips is this expected to have? How many trees are you planning to remove? What are the noise impacts? How far will light from the project glare outside of the project area? And it's really from those answers that we will then compare with the State Environmental Policy Act on where that would fall in terms of if it's a determination of significance, a nonsignificance, or a mitigated determination of nonsignificance. So we won't really know the extent of the environmental studies that will be required until we receive that checklist. I will say that outside of the SEPA process, our code has, the Gig Harbor Vito Code has some heightened environmental regulations within it, such as tree retention and other components within our critical areas ordinance that we'll be evaluating the project under. And I know that Jeff and Tony both know this, but you know, we will be reviewing it just as we review every other project, dotting all of our i's and crossing all of the t's to ensure that we're doing this properly. But to short answer to your question is, it will all start with a SEPA checklist that will be submitted to my department, and we will evaluate those based on state law. And at that time, that probably be an appropriate time to notify the public of what those requirements would be.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Knudsen. At this time, we will take public comment. So is there anybody in the audience that's interested in providing comment? You have three minutes, and please state your name and your address.
Georgina Armstrong, 4340 Borgon Boulevard, Gig Harbor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. I would just like to start by letting you know that the Sports Complex Impact Steering Committee will be circulating a petition from March 31st through April 18th that will be requesting that the city conduct a full environmental impact study on the multi-phase sports complex prior to any clear cutting or tree or vegetation disturbance in each phase. The residents and homeowners of Harbor Hill are not well-versed in this project. In fact, many know either nothing or very little of the project's size and scope or the potential impacts it may have on the community. And that may surprise you, but a lot of people who live here were not living here when that first master plan was done. And actually, by the time the second master plan was done, a lot of people still didn't live here. And of course, those who did were just settling into their homes. And this is the last thing that they heard about. And then things went very quiet after 2018. So they haven't had the opportunity to learn about it. Typically, when I ask people, they'll say, well, they know hardly anything, or, oh, it's over there somewhere. So this is a bit of a problem. I think we need to work very hard on improving the communication to the public. So I know that you want to vote on this tonight. I would prefer, as I think many of the public in Harbor Hill would prefer, that you put it over for two weeks, carry it over because it gives us more time to really absorb this very long document. If you elect not to do so, then I would say the tree impact study, is it an impact study or is it, what type of a survey is that? The removal of trees are a great concern to this community. And in fact, if you had started the clear cutting around now, you would have a lot of really stunned people want to prepare you for that. So also with the tree impact, we will have more noise. So how much more noise are we going to get from Highway 16, which we already get a lot of noise from now? And also with the tree removal is the issue with carbon absorption. And I know that you're concerned about climate change. I know it's something you're going to be working on, which I'm very happy about. But it goes against the grain a little bit to be removing so many trees. So I think you should think about what that impact is for absorbing carbon and sequestration of carbon. But I would like to request that in going forward, all matters concerning the sports complex be made as public as possible with as much notice as possible so that the public is kept apprised of any actions that concern this project. While this facility will be of much benefit to the greater Gig Harbor community, as much support, any large regional facility has impacts on the immediate neighborhood where it is located. And it is those impacts, in this case, that concern many residents in the community.
Thank you.
Your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, Mr. Stecker, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I'll remind our Zoom callers that they can raise their hand if they'd like to make comment now. And I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, we will now deliberate. Any comments from council members? Councilmember Henderson? Oh. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you. I can't believe I beat Roger. I am really impressed with the thoroughness of the presentation from staff about the public process that they're going to be going through going forward with this project. And I understand the extreme amount of concern and interest from the public. I think that's a really great thing about this community, that everybody is so engaged and wants to be involved. But I would like us to be able to move forward with this contract so that we can get started on all the investigations so that we know and have more answers and information for the public about the tree removal and the noise and those kinds of things so that it's based on facts and studies that are professionally done. So I am in favor of moving forward with the proposal.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. More of a comment to staff in the city with with the reaction we saw at the removal of all the trees at 38th and Hunt, which we understand is a county project. It it really hit a nerve. And even reading back through older documents, even when my area was built up in Harbor Hill, the forest disappeared over one night and people were justifiably upset. I think the city is going to need to step up its game on notifying the public before we start felling the trees about what's going to happen, the extent, and maybe even a little something in there that says, here's what we plan to do to mitigate the loss of these trees. Just having the contractor go out there on a weekend or on a Monday morning and clear the acreage for the Phase 1B without notifying anybody, I think you're going to get some pushback, and it's not going to be positive pushback. So we understand when you build anything around here, because of the trees, we have to take some down. I think, again, my recommendation is that we get our community folks involved in this and get some notification out ahead of time and try to get ahead of this. Because, I mean, even I don't like the thought of it. I understand we're building this complex, and it's been stated here a lot that it's going to be great for the community. But it's going to be a very, very tough thing for people to see this. So if we can get out ahead of it, I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Storseth?
Yes, thank you both for your work on this, including the staff as well. This is a long project, one that I think is very exciting. There are definitely steps that we have to take to get there. So I really appreciate hearing the feedback. I think there's also been some great suggestions on how we approach this with the community and really to educate them and inform them. And let it be, you know, it can be something exciting, or it can be FYI. But I would like to motion to approve this.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, but we can continue discussion. Councilmember Wook, did you have a comment?
I did not.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. It's my first time. Okay, so I also wanted to, I'm just going to say this, it may not be the right time, so I apologize for that. I am absolutely in favor of this contract, and I, I think it's been well thought out, and I'm looking forward to all the information. However, it's bothered me all day that it was on the consent agenda, and then it got moved to new business, which I was in favor of. But I feel that the the community probably didn't notice it on the consent agenda, and they certainly weren't anticipating having an opportunity to comment because we don't have public comment on the consent agenda. So they weren't really prepared to then come and comment tonight if they had any input, pro or con. So I appreciated the member of the public's comments about putting it off for till the next meeting, at which time the public might have had more of a chance to absorb this and comment if if they wish. So do I make a motion?
Would be to offer a alternative motion to push this off for two weeks.
So my alternative motion is to push off the decision on this contract until the next council meeting. And if there is a second or not.
I'll second it, just get it on the document.
And that's open for discussion from anybody.
I have a point of order. You can't put two motions on the floor at the same time, can you?
This is a motion to postpone to a future date, and there's, I believe there's no discussion on that. It goes
Okay.
I think Daniel's looking up the sheet here real quick.
So actually, I, it's different than both of that, actually. So it's not in order when there's another motion on the floor. It does require a second and is debatable. And so you could discuss the current motion and perhaps the motion maker in second could withdraw that. Otherwise, you would vote on it, see where it goes, and then you could table it until a date certain at that time. I'm learning things I didn't know, and I've been doing this for 35 years.
Okay, Councilmember Storseth?
Sorry, question. Still a rookie here. Just curious, since Robin is Protem, is that, is she able to vote just as any other time as a council member? Okay, I'm not trying to deny it, just asking. I'm just curious. I don't know. All right, thank you.
So it seems what we need to do here is dispose of the first motion, which was to approve the contract. And if it fails, then the motion that you had proposed, Mayor Protem, would be good to put on the table for, see if there's a second discussion.
Okay, so we will take a vote on the first motion. Okay, all those in favor, starting from my left?
Aye.
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 Aye. Nay?
Aye.
And the motion passes five to two, right? Okay, very good. All right. Can we request a five-minute recess?
You are the presiding officer. You may do that if you'd like.
People have a five-minute recess.
Welcome.
Yeah.
All right, we are going to go back into session with new business number two. Public hearing, first reading and adoption of 1483, renewing interim zoning controls related to transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters, and emergency housing. And we will have a report from Community Director, Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As the Mayor Protem just stated, we're here to consider ordinance 1483, which would renew interim zoning controls pertaining to transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters, and emergency housing. This, this information was first heard by the council in September when we brought forward ordinance 1440 or 1466, excuse me. And we brought this forward to the council after in gross second substitute bill passed the state legislature, 1220, regarding these types of housing. And as we talked about, I believe in a work session, there were several items that were required to be amended in our code now in order to address this, and then several items that we can address throughout our comprehensive plan update that's due in 2024. The council conducted a public hearing previously and sent The council conducted a public hearing previously and sent this to the planning commission for their review. And they conducted their, a series of work sessions beginning on January 6th. And on, let's see, February 17th, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on the interim regulations. And at their next meeting, they were anticipating providing a recommendation to the council. However, the Department of Commerce did submit a letter to us the day after the public hearing that had a number of items that staff wanted to analyze prior to coming forward to the council. And those were also items that had not been analyzed by the planning commission. So rather than coming forward to the council with a recommendation and a commerce letter that we felt you would likely want the planning commission's input, we have gone back to the planning commission. And they have reviewed the Department of Commerce letter. They have made a couple of recommendations for amendments to the interim regulations. And they will be having another public hearing to address that on April 7th, to ensure that the public has had adequate time to review the amendments to that subsequent to the Department of Commerce letter. With this going on, we will not meet the six-month time period for the interim regulations. And therefore, this ordinance, staff is recommending that council pass the ordinance, which would renew the regulations, the interim regulations for another period of six months. With that, as well as with the short-term rental moratorium that is next, we do believe that we will have this coming forward to council well in advance of six months. As a matter of fact, we hope to bring the ordinance for this transitional housing, et cetera, forward within a month to council. And once that ordinance comes forward, the interim regulations will sunset and the new regulations would take full force. So with that, staff recommends that council adopt ordinance 1483. And I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Knutson? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. So if anyone is in the room that would like to come in, provide testimony, you've got three minutes. I don't see anyone. Mr. Stecker, is there anyone on Zoom?
I don't see any raised hands, but I'll remind our Zoom callers to raise their hand if they'd like to come into this public hearing. And I am still not seeing any.
Okay, the public hearing is closed and we will go to council deliberation and action. Are there any comments from the council? Councilmember Barber.
I move to approve ordinance 1483.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Hearing none, this measure has passed seven to zero. Okay, next up is a public hearing, first reading and adoption of ordinance 1484, renewing the moratorium on acceptance of new lodging level one applications. And a report again from Community Development Director Katrina Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Denson. This is our second renewal this evening and this one is regarding acceptance of new lodging level one applications. On September 13th, 2021, council passed ordinance 1467, which instituted a six-month moratorium on the acceptance of lodging level one applications. The council at that meeting and at previous planning and building committee meetings discussed short-term rentals being a relatively new land use and that our code did not adequately address that use. Additionally, it was identified that our zoning regulations were inadequate to address what was happening within the city and that the process to permit these uses was somewhat convoluted. Again, that ordinance 1467 did pass a six-month moratorium on lodging level one applications. I will note that lodging level two and three applications are still able to come forward. And we've had a lodging level two applicant that was one of the commenters under the original moratorium that we figured out they were actually lodging level two and they've been proceeding through the process, permit process. Since September, staff has reviewed our current code against the state's definition of short-term rental and has analyzed state code pertaining to this. Staff has also reached out to other cities within the Puget Sound area as well as Walla Walla, who also has had a proliferation of short-term rentals. And we've been able to evaluate their codes as well as speak to their staff and how, both for good and bad, of what has been implemented, what's worked and what has not worked. Additionally, we have, staff has worked with our tourism and communications director on short-term rentals as it does have a relationship to our tourism industry. And our, the director Laura Pettit has been taking, has taken the lead on establishing our review of how many short-term rentals currently exist within the city. I will pause right now to say that that number, depending on which company you go by, is somewhere between 40 to 65 short-term rentals within the city. And there are currently two short-term rentals that are properly permitted. Let's see. After that review, staff did go to the planning commission, which was directed by the council. And they have currently held two work sessions and quickly identified that this was a much larger issue than I think originally identified. And it is a very complex, complex topic. The planning commission, noting how complex it was, decided to open a two-week public comment period to all of the citizens of Gig Harbor. And that was instituted on the 4th of February and went through the 18th of February. We were able to get 36 comments from our residents that were very well thought out. And I give a lot of kudos to the, to the citizens because when we do get comments that are as good as these, we're able to work through the process and craft regulations to fit their needs much easier. So that was great. The planning commission then, at their next meeting, analyzed all of these comments and they began to formulate draft code. I will say that after that meeting, the planning commission decided to go back and take two weeks of their own as an individual to put down on paper what they think regulations should be, based on their research as well as public comment. And on the 31st of March, they are going to be getting together for a work session and expressing their opinions of regulations, each of them, to each other in hopes to come up with a shared or recommended draft code that we could then craft, take that to a public hearing through the planning commission prior to coming to city council. One thing I do want to point out is I know there has been some frustration about that we were not able to get this completed within six months. And I just wanted to state for the record that we had the intention of getting this done within six months. However, when the moratorium came into be in September, we were down a long-range planner and had been recruiting for one. We did not, were not able to get that filled until September, or February 14th, as well as we had our other senior planner resign her position in December. So there was a period of time during this moratorium of about two months where we had neither of our two senior planner positions filled. And because of that, work priorities needed to change in order to ensure that our private development applications, the things that were legislatively required to do, were able to get done. I'm happy to report that as of the 7th of March, we are fully staffed and we're up fully operational, well-oiled machine, going, getting things done. So it's not a full bad story, but I did want to acknowledge that and acknowledge the public and their frustration that this is taking longer than six months. So this evening, staff recommends that council adopt ordinance 1484. What this would do would renew the moratorium for a period of six months and it would also institute an emergency. Now, these two things are separate actions by separate RCWs. We could adopt this by moratorium without an emergency. And what that would have the effect of was there would be a five-day period where the moratorium would not be in place any longer and applications for short-term rentals could come in during that five-day period. So unlike Director Langholm, where there's an emergency on the road that could have a physical issue for someone or a police issue or a flood or something that people typically think of as an emergency in the planning world, when there's something that could be contrary to the public peace or how we live or how we, our land uses, that is the planning emergency. And that specifically has to do with how quickly the regulations or, in this case, the moratorium would take place. So the emergency in this regard is only so that the moratorium would take place and be in effect upon adoption. So just wanted to clarify that and I'm happy to answer any questions if I did not explain that adequately. I would also like to note for the council that the extension or renewal of this moratorium, staff believes is for the good of the general public. And within the public, we also mean our applicants. What we're finding is that there are a number of citizens who are very concerned about short-term rentals, specifically in the Millville area and downtown area. Also, from the owner or user perspective, there's concern that our process is too arduous, too costly and too convoluted. And as we've openly said, our code does not address adequately short-term rentals. And so we're having to evaluate them under a conditional use permit. Through a lot of the public comment that we've heard in other cities, they classify short-term rentals in various tiers, where you have short-term rental one, which could be owner-occupied situation that would not require a conditional use permit, would not necessarily require the full traffic study, et cetera. And so one of our short-term rentals that is permitted in the city right now, that owner likely would have not had to have gone through a conditional use permit process if we had the adequate provisions in place. And so we do think that it's not only good for the residents who are concerned about this to have their due process of going through reviewing and having hearings, but also for our potential applicants. Our current process does not serve them either. And so by being able to have this code in place where we know which fits into which category, which one requires a hearing, which one does not require a hearing, it will be a much more streamlined process that will be good for our customers as well. And I, one additional note is that although we are seeking a six-month extension, that is a requirement of state law. We can extend a moratorium for a period of six months. The, the state law does not say up to six months. So that's why we're coming forward for a full six months, although we're showing in our work plan in the council packet that this will be to you in less than three months. And so similar to the transitional housing, this moratorium would expire upon adoption of the formal regulations. And if that takes three months, then it takes three months. If it takes four, that's fine and the moratorium will expire at that time. Yes, on a final note, I will just note that the planning commission and the staff are really in the thick of it in these regulations. Again, we've had really great comments from both opposition and in support of short-term rentals. What that tells me is that, yes, we're right, our code does not adequately address this and there's some changes that we need to make. We're really in the thick of it. The planning commission, again, is going to have their meeting on the 31st and we'll proceed forward and we anticipate, as noted on the second page of the council bill, being at first reading with you, council, on June 13th of this year. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Knutson. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, oh, yes, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. It's more of a comment than a question. As we've read through a lot of the public comments, there's a number of residents who are not in favor extending this moratorium. And I, it's clear that we can't extend it for any less than through six months. I do appreciate your current work plan that shows a delivery date of at least the first one sometime in mid-June. And I think that may alleviate some of the concerns of the process going to drag out. So appreciate that very much. And I'd like to encourage the development, and the staff, the development of the codes to be as simple as possible. And then we build in a feedback loop to review what we've done once this has been, the ordinance has been made, so that we can make tweaks later on. It's like considered analogous to driving a car where you make constant small changes rather than really large ones. So keep us on track and I appreciate the work that your staff has been doing so far. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Is anybody here in the audience that would like to comment? I don't see anybody. Mr. Stecker, anybody online?
I'll remake, I'll remind our Zoom callers that they can raise their hand if they'd like to make comment. And I am seeing none for this item.
Okay, then we are back for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, Madam, I thank you, Protem, thank you. I like to just compliment the planning commission. I know they've been working really hard on this and I know there's been a lot of comments from our citizens. I appreciate that you're wanting to get it right and that you have acknowledged that you need some more time. And so thank you for that. And with that, I move to approve ordinance number 1484.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Oops, oh, just a moment. Councilmember Lichten, did you have a comment?
Yes, I would actually like to move to have the mayor or Mayor Protem direct the staff to prepare an ordinance by the date of June 13th council meeting. As we cannot do an emergency moratorium for more than six months, I would just like to see that the more, that the first reading would come to council by the June 13th council meeting, as in the council bill.
Do we need a second for that? Okay, do we have, anybody who'd like to second? Okay, Councilmember Barber, seconds, any discussion? Councilmember Woo.
Yes, I, I have some concerns about that since, since this is what they're going to strive to do. For me, that's good enough because we don't really know what else could come down the pike. And if we have another road that falls through or if we had some other emergencies that affect our planning department, I, I don't really want them to be accountable and have only to have this ordinance by June the 13th. I think if whatever time they're going to do, I mean, I think that's what they're striving to do and, and that's good enough for me. So I will not be supporting this new amendment motion.
Councilmember Storseth.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Jenny's comments there. I did want to add a comment in between our motion and second. I thought we, I thought we had an opportunity in there to interject before we went to a vote. So just wanted to add my comments on there. Director Knutson, appreciate your work and the staff of the, and the work done by your staff as well as the planning commission. You guys have done ample research on this. It's a hot topic for a lot of people out there. I think it's staggering to hear those numbers of how many people actually go through the permitting process anyways. I am very curious to see what we would have, you know, in there and is it more accommodating for people? You know, in an easy, right thing to do, but I look at what is the code enforcement? And is that something that we're capable of doing, you know, even at this time with the six months, even having that five-day grace period for people to do the permitting? I'm, I'm curious to see what, what will change. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Woo and Councilmember Storseth. I think these dates are great as targets, but it's going to take what it's going to take. So, and I know you're not going to be hesitating to get it done, so I do not support the motion.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just want to clarify, can I ask Katrina a question right now? So I had earlier discussions with Katrina about confidence that you will have this with the plan in place. How confident are you that you would be able to have this to us for that first June 13th meeting?
I would say our confidence level is. I would say our confidence level is a nine out of ten to get it to you by that date for first reading. And as I mentioned to several other council members, once it gets to council, I cannot, I don't, wouldn't necessarily at this point have that same confidence level that it would be two readings, because it may come here and it, we know that this is a hot button issue. So the council may ask for a work session to evaluate comments heard or things like that, but we are very confident in the June thirteenth date.
And just to clarify, what I'm recommending is only just to have it to council by the June thirteenth meeting. I'm not putting any, you know, time length on the council part, correct?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Rodenberg. Okay, if there aren't, so now we're going to be voting on Councilmember, oh, sorry, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to thank Councilmember Storset for bringing up the issue of enforcement, any codes that we make. Lacking enforcement, it really don't mean much. So I believe it's a topic that we need to talk about in the future, that ensure that we have enough enforcers around that can help with this. And I know that we are somewhat short right now in the city. But again, it's a topic that I think we need to talk about later. So thank you, Councilmember Storset, for bringing that up.
Okay, if there is no more discussion, we will have a vote on Councilmember Lichten's motion, starting, start from the right this time. Councilmember Barber, sorry. Shake it up.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Okay, so the motion fails. Three to four. All right, now we are at number five on the new business agenda, resolution twelve thirty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-two.
We're on item four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Dave.
Rodenbach has been sitting here patient.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I keep skipping ahead. All right, we're on number four, ordinance fourteen eighty-five, adopting a biennial budget process. Council, Councilmember. Finance Director Rodenbach.
City council, this should be pretty quick then. I won't go over the whole council bill. If you have any questions on it, for sure, please ask. We've, we've done a biennial budget before, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And we had, we, I, I think the city did quite well with it. And, and it worked very well for us. And this is an ordinance bringing that back. We would have to pass this before June for it to be effective for the next biennium. And the plan would be to get it passed in April. And if it does pass, the process that we do for the annual budget literally doesn't change. It's, it's the same process. The only thing you're going to be seeing is twenty-three and twenty-four. And we do a true biennial budget in terms of it's a two-year budget. The city management will have the capability of moving and flowing stuff from one period to another period. There's cities that do, there's many different ways to do it. Some cities do two, one-year budgets at the same time and many variations thereof, which to me funk up the whole process. And this really does help with the long range thinking. And you're going to be amazed when you see how you start putting it into play. And with that, I'll just take any questions.
Any questions from council members? Okay, seen none. I will open it up to public comment. I don't see anybody in the audience that would like to comment. Mr. Stecker.
I don't see any raised hands on Zoom for this one.
Okay, moving on to council deliberation and action. Any council members have any comments or would like to make a motion?
There is no motion needed. This will go to a second reading.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So if no other council members have any comments, we will bring it back to the next meeting on consent.
Why does this one have to go to a second reading and the others did not? Sorry, the new kid.
Our normal process is to send things through two, ordinances through two readings, unless there's a reason why we need to take care of them sooner than later. And both the previous ones needed to be done sooner than later.
Okay.
And those require five votes to go forward rather than just four. When you do it that way.
Okay. Well, very good. Thank you, Director Rodenbach. Okay, next up is resolution twelve thirty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three strategic plan. And we will have a report from interim city administrator, Tony Piesacki.
Well, quite frankly, we put this on consent. And Councilmember Wook got ahold of me and said, wait a minute. Just on consent, this thing needs a little bit of attention. It needs to be celebrated that we have this plan put together, something that this council, not at this level, has done before. So I agree with her. I think the work that you did, the thought that you put into this needs to be recognized. And so having this recording on imposterity, I think is a really good thing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Wook because it was her idea.
Thank you. And you bet, that's why I wanted to bring this off the consent agenda. Never before has the Gig Harbor City Council and our department directors come up with a plan to work together and take action steps for the coming two years. This is a really good thing that we've done. It's a, we work together in our retreat and it's a positive thing. So three, last year, three council members and a mayor were elected to the council for twenty twenty-one, were elected in twenty twenty-one. And when you attended those council forums, you heard discussions from our citizens about the five items that are on this strategic plan. For every item that's listed on this plan, the citizens will also find action steps to get these goals accomplished. Too many of our city employees left working for the city of Gig Harbor in recent years. And our citizens in these forums wanted to know what the council is going to do to attract and retain good employees. And that's why the number one item on this agenda is to foster a healthy city organization, to retain good employees, to take care of them. And that's what we thought was important, working with our staff. Item number two on this strategic action plan will ensure a sustainable future for our city services. Making sure our infrastructure is in place, preparing for streets that allow the traffic to move in the future. Clean water, sewer facilities that are up to date and keep our community health, and developing better communications with our citizens. This is what we heard from our citizens, and that's why this is item number two on the consent agenda. Item number three on this plan, as I door balled, I heard most of our citizens want to stop growth and put the infrastructure in place first. Well, the state says it is illegal to stop growth, but we can slow growth. And what we can really do is to make sure that any growth maintains the small town character and historic preservation than all of our citizens want to see. So please hold the council accountable for every vote we take when it comes to growing and keeping the small town atmosphere that all of our citizens have, have moved here for. Item number four on the strategic plan is to promote environmental sustainability and preserve Gig Harbor's natural beauty. We have heard citizens concerned over clear cutting our trees. We have heard citizens' words in the pros plan about your desire for open, for more open spaces and more trails. I believe this is a council who is committed to conserving land and open space in Gig Harbor as best we can. I believe we understand the importance of trees when it comes to climate change and the importance to have salmon to feed the orca. The last item on the agenda, item number five, is to promote and enhance dynamic and robust economy in the city of Gig Harbor. During the pandemic, we gave grants to small businesses all over Gig Harbor. We support Gig Harbor businesses, whether they're uptown or downtown or Gig Harbor North. And I know some folks on this council would also, also believe it's important to attract more larger businesses. And that's a good plan for keeping our citizens close to home as they work. So that's why we did this. Those are the five items on the agenda on this strategic plan in no particular order. Once passed, citizens will find this strategic plan on our website. And I believe in our packets for every council meeting. So that's what it's about. I am proud of this work that all of, all of us have done with our staff. I think it's a really good thing. And so that's why I wanted the citizens to know what was going on with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook. Are there any questions from council? Okay, then we will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to comment?
I don't see any raised hands on Zoom.
All right, then back to council deliberation. Councilmember Wook.
I move to approve resolution twelve thirty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three strategic plan.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Any discussion? Sorry, I forgot about the discussion part again. Okay, now we will take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes seven to, I'm sorry, yeah, seven to zero. All right, we are through our new business. Our next segment of the meeting will be council reports. So we will entertain council reports first, and then we will go to council comments. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. On March seventeenth, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council meeting. Last fall, our city submitted growth target numbers for twenty fifty. And I believe those numbers will be formally adopted the beginning of April. The Puget Sound Regional Council envision twenty fifty clearly calls out the duty of each local government to set how now, how housing numbers are met. And with this conversation at the Pierce County Regional Council level, I also spoke with Laura Benjamin, who is a Puget Sound Regional Council Senior Planner, Growth Management Division. And we were talking about how cities can actually meet their growth target numbers and what we can do about housing. And Ms. Benjamin says in about six months that the Puget Sound Regional Council will have some guidance. And it will be temporarily called Housing Actions by Place. So I think that will some, try to give us some, some goals. They also support, of course, the mayor's work with SHAPE, a South Sound Housing Affordability Plan. And so that's, that was basically the meeting of the Pierce County Regional Council. Thank you.
Okay, any other council reports? Seen none. Council comments. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes. Last year, the city council helped fund the Gig Harbor Peninsula Food Bank two hundred thousand dollars toward their eight million dollar goal. And they're getting very close to achieving that goal. In fact, the building is ready for a tour. So this Saturday, they're going to have a virtual hard hat tour on Facebook, on their Facebook page. And the community is welcome to attend that. And you'll hear from key individuals at the food bank and they'll be showing you the interiors of the new building. There will also be a viewing party at Oceans Five, where they have the Facebook presentation on a screen. So you can reach that Facebook page by Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish Food Bank dot com. I mean, that's just their Facebook page. So hope to see you all there.
Fantastic. Councilmember Wook.
It's at ten thirty, by the way. Saturday.
Tonight is March the twenty-eighth. And we're getting to the end of Women's History Month. The women in Gig Harbor have been making a lot of history. When I was elected to council in two thousand eighteen, I was the only elected woman sitting on this dais. And in twenty twenty-two, there are four council member, council women, a woman mayor, and for the first time in Gig Harbor, we have a woman city administrator that's going to be working with us. Short timer, Piesacki, you've done a great job. So to all the women and little girls out there in Gig Harbor land, if your passion is Gig Harbor and you want to make this city a better place to live, then there's a place for you on the city council and in our city administration. I don't want to leave the men out. So to council members, Henderson and Rodenberg and Storset, it is an honor to work with you as well.
Here, here.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Rodenberg, you don't, you don't have anything else. You, your light's still on. That's usually me. Okay, I think that's it. Now, announcement of upcoming meetings. Oh, I'm sorry. It's because it says my name. And so then I think it's because my light is on. So sorry, Councilmember Barber.
My comment is even more appropriate because we're laughing so much and having so much fun. I just want to comment briefly about community. I, a lot of us have been talking on council and I just want to recognize there's a lot going on in the world right now that's causing a lot of us to be really anxious. And it's also made me realize that we all need to take a moment to acknowledge what we have and appreciate those around us and those things around us. The people of Ukraine have shown us a strength that I know, I wonder how many of us would have if faced with the same things that they're faced with right now. At the same time, I can vouch for this, that members of the military and their families are anxious about what could happen. And they need our support right now more than ever. Those who face conflicts around the world regularly face these challenges. And so I'm even more grateful that we can have a meeting tonight that shows the strength of our community and really demonstrates that we can agreeably disagree and live together as friends respectfully. I would ask everyone that tonight and really every day, that we each take a few moments to reflect on what we have and how we can pay it forward more often. Through kindness and by supporting each other, we will move forward and create a stronger community than we even have today. So I just would like to say, let's go forward and show the world how we can do this together.
Beautifully said, Councilmember Barber. Thank you. Okay, announcement of upcoming meetings. There's a meeting schedule attached to your agenda online, or if you're here with us today, it's attached to the document you picked up when you walked in. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.